Well, thank you. Thanks so much for the invitation, Dr. Droudi, Dr. Cash, and the board. I'm Susan Salsito, Deputy Superintendent for the Santa Barbara County Education Office. And as Izzy was talking about earlier, as student reporters, she's talked about homecoming. I kind of feel like a homecoming. I had my, started off my education down here in Santa Barbara Unified. It's great to be back. And the purpose tonight for sharing this STEM Institute from, co-sponsored by ExxonMobil, is really two things. One is to feature the excellent work of six teachers and all of the students in the Unified School District. They're amazing three here tonight, and I can't wait to show you what they did. And number two is something that's a theme that I've heard all throughout the night around partnerships, and the partnerships really with this institute, Santa Barbara County Education Office, ExxonMobil, who granted the funds, the Santa Barbara Unified School District, of course, and Partners in Education, who provided volunteers for the project. And as I talk about the institute, I just want to boil it down to three points first. One is that we had an institute meeting with the six teachers at the beginning of the school year that launched some creative thinking, professional development around STEM. And then they went off and did some projects, and then we came back together and culminated those projects in the spring. So kind of three pieces there, so that I can tell you more about it. The six teachers here, you, Dr. Droudi already explained, Marilyn, Claire, and Anne are really of a feeder-school pattern. We were really particular about choosing students, teachers, from the middle grades, and I'll tell you more about that. And then we have Rob, Cha, and Blake from Adams and La Cumbre. One team, Rob, Cha, and Blake, worked on breaking down barriers. It was a water project. I'm going to go back for a moment here. Freshwater, brackish water, ocean water, and I'll come back to that in a sec. And the other project Marilyn, Claire, and Anne worked on, again as a feeder pattern, had to do around building bridges, engineering. They used university blue books for communication, and I'll tell you more about that project as well. But what I want to do is go back to that first day. I told you that we had a STEM Institute, professional development around STEM. And as Dr. Droudi said, we really came to it and set out four big messages, but four big ones. One was a compelling issue around it being a STEM, a national priority. And not just science, technology, engineering, math as content areas, but really around critical thinking and inspiring students to pursue this as a career opportunity in the future. So we really set that as a, as a stage for our learning. And the second piece that really focused in on these grades, and the reason for having these elementary, upper grades with, coupled with junior high, is that critical area of ages 10 to 14. And all of you know, students in those areas, in those grade age levels. Before age 10, you have so many students who are full of wonder and inquiry, and they're excited about learning. And research shows that somehow between ages 10 and 14, especially for girls, the interest declines. And so it's so important before they're freshmen in high school to inspire them and really have experiences that will inspire them to pursue a career in science. And therefore, those middle grades were selected for this STEM Institute. And finally, in that institute, we talked a lot about science identity. And I know Holly and Bridget talked about this too, about not just doing the science, but really seeing themselves as a scientist. And so anything that they were going to do in this project was going to be able to share it, have these students in these middle grades really see themselves as scientists. And so what we had as a challenge, at the end of that day in the fall, we wanted to leverage the school feeder system to promote engagement, build a classroom community of scientists, and involve the community. And so six teachers, four schools, two projects, equals great science. So let's go to that first project I was talking to you about, Rob, Cha, and Blake. This, these comprised of fifth grade, sixth grade, and seventh graders, water systems. And they took, with this grant funding, that they received, field trips to different areas. And they really learned about our community, the water systems in Santa Barbara. And then they took a field trip at the end of the school year so that the younger students could go see where they would be going to junior high and know that they, know their surroundings and be familiar with that. So that feeder pattern was really strong. I'm going to show you a really too short clip it of some of their project. It really is a lot longer, but it's 30 seconds, and you'll kind of hear some students here, so.
It's better to work together than alone. I have fun interacting with other grades.
How it feels to be students, five was a pretty cool experience. I made doing the living, non-living connection game, working with the seventh graders. Go out and make comfortable talking with them.
Everyone had great ideas to share.
I learned about a biotic and hyotic factors from the channel.
All right. And I said I cut it short, but I did that for the presentation to be short today, but I'll show you a little bit longer one in a moment. And they really worked on the standards, the science standards, that they're currently working in, in their classrooms, ecosystems, earth systems, but also next-generation science standards around cross-cutting concepts of cause and effect, and energy and matter, and scientific practices of analyzing and interpreting data. And so they really, you didn't see much of it, but they really did leverage school feeder systems, Adams to La Cumbre, and involve the community in their project. And I want to show you a little bit more about this one. This is the one, the one project between Peabody Charter and Santa Barbara Junior High, fifth grades and eighth grade, building bridges. They used university blue books, and I'll show you them, some examples in a minute. And they really buddied up fifth graders and eighth graders writing to each other about their science projects before they even met. And they had field trips together. They had parent volunteers who were engineers come in and talk with the students. And Partners in Education, again, supplied some more engineer volunteers on behalf of this project. I'd like to share, share their project with you. It's about a one-minute video. But in it, you'll see some pre-assessment and post-assessment information around the achievement that the students received. One of the things that most impressed me about this project was building relationships that hung younger and older children. And one way we did that was journaling through blue books. Right behind. You can see that in the springtime when we all came back together, that the teachers who were working on the projects helped build these video presentations for, for presentations like this. I want to share with you, again, the standards they were working towards amongst many were motion and stability, engineering and design, the cross-cutting concept of structure and function, and scientific practices of constructing explanations and design solutions. They definitely leveraged school feeder systems. They literally drove back and forth with the blue books from Peabody to Santa Barbara Junior High and back and forth, and involved the community. I want to share with you just a few words from Blake Garnon. He's not here tonight, but he's from Adams Elementary and shares a little bit of the perspective.
I was just really very satisfied across grade levels, we'll be together. I was a little hesitant as a fifth grade teacher, and how the older kids in junior high would treat the kids, or how the younger kids would listen to and show respect to the older kids. It really was a cool experience in the end, and if we did that, it was a powerful project. We'd be able to learn from, get to know the seventh graders, and help pretty much remove social barriers that should be getting in the way of students and students.
And lastly, some words from Marilyn Garza, who is here tonight, around some of the work that she, some of the things that she learned. It's you, you look great.
For years, I searched for ways to bring together the community, families and students, and promote learning as a group. And it certainly, this project brought us to a learning at a higher level to be effective, not only the students involved, but also the art community.
So the STEM Institute was last year. You saw the six teachers involved, the four schools, and all those, a lot of science. And the, the leads at SB CEO, Ellen Barker, who's here tonight, Chris Bergstrom and myself, just had such a wonderful time working and learning with everyone involved. We really wanted to thank the Partners in Education, as well as the Unified School District, for partnering with us and really producing some great results for students in the areas of STEM. So thank you very much.
Well, this is really a science evening, and it's, it's great, it's great, because we all know that this is the direction we need to be headed. I think the building bridges part is fantastic. I mean, this vertical integration is something we know that's really key. And to be working with our, our other school districts that are coming in as well, although Peabody is, is a charter school, but it's in our district. But I'm sure that some Galita and Hope and some of those other districts as well will be really interested in participating in this in the future. Board members, did you have any comments? Mrs. Parker?
Well, just a quick question. Is there any hope of doing this again?
Actually, there is. ExxonMobil, they, they came to us last year, the beginning of, gosh, it was probably a couple springs ago, and said, you know, they really prioritize and focus and want to work on STEM. And they want to work on it with educators. And they came to us and said, what can we create together for educators in our area? So we actually wanted to select great educators in this particular district and kept it small on purpose. And we shared with them the results of this last spring. And at the end of that, they asked us to do it again. And they wanted us to do it again, hopefully within the district again. And we'll, I'll talk with Dr. Droudi soon and see what we can do. But yes, they do. They have a lot of interest nationally, ExxonMobil does, in the area STEM, and our organization does as well. So thanks for the question. And I, I don't know if anybody else wanted to say anything for, they're here, they've been. The teachers, I mean, yeah.
Well, Mr. Hearn, did you want to say something?
As a past president, president of Partners in Education, I accept your thanks. And just to know that we do provide a tremendous amount of support to the classroom teachers in this town. And we're thankful that it exists, and we're glad we could be of help.
Great, thank you.
Great. Looking forward to it. And you might want to look at Sempra Energy as well, because I know they've been giving grants for environmental education, integrating that into the curriculum. So wherever we can find funding to do this, it's great, but appreciate their excellent support on this one.
I want to personally thank the teachers that were involved that are here tonight and publicly acknowledge the great work that Susan and her staff is doing at the County Office of Education. It's really a treat to come back to Santa Barbara and have a real great curriculum and instruction leader at the County Office of Education partnering with us. It's, it's, it's very, very, very helpful. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again. We have lots of good things still on the agenda this evening. And next up is Just Communities. And I see Elena Marie, is Jared here as well? No. Okay, Anna here. We're really looking forward to this because we've been following the interpretation project closely as board members, I know.
Well, thank you, President Deacon. It's a pleasure to be here with all of you. And we come on the heels of presentations about so many really cool partnerships and programs with the district. I heard a lot tonight in other programs about the themes of collaboration, the importance of the sense of belonging and opportunity, which are certainly core to our, our values as well. My name is Elena Marie. I'm the project manager with Just Communities.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. I'm Dr. Anna Vaseta, and I'm program manager with Just Communities. My focus is schools and families. And I would like to hand out to you a hard copy of the document that was sent to you via email earlier.
Yeah, we got it. I think everyone got one. Oh, okay, all right. We'll take the new one. Thank you.
I know you all are familiar, but Just Communities, as you know, we're a local nonprofit organization. Our mission is to, let me bring it up here. The small one. Oh, there it is. Our mission is to end all forms of discrimination and oppression and to promote social justice. And the way we do that, our focus is really not about us, the staff members of Just Communities doing the work, but creating environments where we can empower and support emerging and experienced leaders, who might be students, they might be teachers, or administrators, or other staff members, or families, to go back to their schools and make positive changes in terms of equality and access for everyone who are part of our school communities. And so we're really, oops, I'm sorry, getting ahead of myself. We're really, excuse me, we really value the last 10 years of the relationship with the district in really doing creative programs together to promote equity. And we're just going to talk about a couple of them tonight, the recent ones that took place over the summer, the Institute for Equity in Education and our Interpreting for Social Justice workshop.
I'm going to be speaking to you about, let's see. There we go. Culture proficiency. But before I do, I just have to tell you how, I'm actually very grateful that we're at the end of so many great presentations today because I am really enthused by the, the passion that I see going on in the school district. I have worked in the past with Lawrence Hall of Science, and they're a fantastic group. Family Math came out of that. They've been working in equity areas for decades now. The FOST system of science education. So I'm just, I have to just stop and mention that I'm really excited to see there's a partnership. And also, they didn't emphasize the Inverness Research Institute. That is their researcher, their evaluator. A great group, a real, get really good feedback from them. So congratulations on the programs that you have coming into the school. I'm just, had to stop and, off the notes and, and, and share that because I'm really excited by what you're doing. To address the cultural proficiency, cultural proficiency, the way we are defining it is the continuum of gaining knowledge, of addressing the will, the skill, and the capacity of administrators, teachers, and other school staff to really effectively work with folks and students, families of different cultural backgrounds. So in doing that, we really like to focus on learning about some of the issues around diversity and, and experiences in society, in our social structure, that really are replicated within the schools. And learning about that, and learning ways to align our school culture and instruction to the lives of the students and the families that schools are serving. Also, with creating the, the environments that are culturally proficient, it enables students to become active participants in their own journey into the future. And it's really reflected in your statement there. I was noticing where ensuring success of all students to be productive citizens in a diverse and changing world. So for all students to learn how to work together, and for all teachers and administrators to really value the families and integrate the cultures of families into the schools. And I know the district has been doing some work around cultural proficiency, so you may have heard already about the continuum. One of the ways we do this is through our Institute for Equity in Education. I've been with Just Communities for a year and a half, but since 2005, there's been 150 Santa Barbara Unified School District employees, teachers, staff. Sometimes parents and students have also attended, just a few, when I look at the data. A five-day residential institute. There's been attrition, of course. So there's about 120 individuals in the school district that have participated in the institute. IEE uses evidence-based strategies to improve, looking at how do we improve instructional practices and educational leadership to close the achievement gap. And we do this by addressing four areas, what we call the four Rs. Relevance, relationships, rigor, and racial and economic justice. I've heard a lot of talk tonight about the importance of relationships. The importance of building relationships with all students and their families is essential to moving on to building relevance in the curriculum and instructional practices and in the school culture. Rigor, we talked about rigor. I've heard it talked about in terms of the curriculum with the STEM. And rigor, we also look at it as the rigor that it takes for teachers and administrators to have the passion to really meet the, the needs and the interests and the relevancy of all students. And of course, this couldn't happen without racial and economic justice. So that's a strong point of what we look at. One of the aspects of our institute is everybody goes away with an action plan of how are we going to take some action in our school environments to implement what was learned at the institute. And also, Just Communities follows up with support for carrying out those action plans. Oh, yes, I do have a quote. And in the packet you have, there's several quotes towards the back. The first quote I'll read to you, because I think it really highlights some of the strengths of the program. "Just Communities provided education I needed to recognize the roots of the achievement gap, support to create a concrete action plan to address it in my classroom, and confidence that I can be an agent of change in a system that has long perpetuated inequality." So this quote really sums up a lot of what we do there. The next two quotes talk about the support, the follow-up support, and the importance of learning about the history and current status of public schools.
Thanks, Anna. And so our programs all really go hand in hand. The Institute for Equity in Education really looks at big picture, closing the achievement gap, promoting equity. And so the programs I'm working with now really look at this strand of cultural proficiency of language access. Because I am, you know, I think everybody, oh, let me go back, sorry. I think virtually everyone agrees that family engagement is one of the most important things that we can do for, to support student success. But all of our best intentions and great programs to that end won't work if families and schools can't communicate with each other. So investing in that link of interpretation and translation and truly inclusive multilingual spaces makes everything else, gives everything else the potential to really be successful. And so that's what this initiative is about. It's about training for those who provide interpreting services, which in most of the schools are staff members, but also some parent volunteers as well. As well as training for other members of the, the school teams about how to set up a space that's, that's as multilingual and inclusive as possible. And when we're talking about that, we mean, how do we make everybody in the room as equal as we can on a linguistic plane? Make sure everybody's getting the same information in the same, in the same formats, that everybody has a chance to interact and share their brilliance and their ideas, as well as receive information and ask questions and things like that. So that's what we're trying to do. And we had a session of the Interpreting for Social Justice Workshop that was just for the district that took place in August. It's a two-day training. It was facilitated by an international, or, I don't know if he's international yet, excuse me, a national training expert, Roberto Tijerina, as well as the district's own Alma Flores. And to date, 24 of the staff members from the district have been through the training, as well as two parent volunteers. And they've really expressed how much they got out of the interactive and creative training, both in terms of really practical skills when it comes to interpretation. A lot of folks had never had the opportunity to have any formal training before in interpretation, said it was really valuable. And also, the dialogue and the tools that they took back about how, not just to do their jobs better, but to make the school more inclusive in general. One of the things that we did at the end of the workshop is we had an opportunity for participants to reflect, work on teams, and then come to agreement about what they saw as the top priorities for the district in advancing language justice. Because of course, there's 100 things that we could always do, you know. What did they see as the top two most important? And a team of the graduates already had a chance to talk with Dr. Droudi more about this in detail, but I wanted to just let you know what, what they said was most important to them. The first one was to clarify the interpreter role for all parties, for those who are doing the interpreting, as well as everybody else involved. And an example of that would be that an interpreter should only be, can only play the role of an interpreter in a meeting. Ideally, they wouldn't have any other tasks or be in any other role, so that they can be unbiased. Because if I'm trying to be a parent liaison, as well as an interpreter, then I've got a stake in the meeting, whereas an interpreter should be able to be completely neutral and focus on their hard work of interpreting. So that was an example, something that comes up for us to think about. We know that we all live with really tight resources, so how can we do our best with that? And, and that was one of them. The second one was to ensure that interpreters are set up for success as much as possible. One of those is to, to follow the standard of any meeting or event that's more than an hour in a length, to schedule two interpreters, so they can work as a team, switching off every 20 minutes. And then to make sure they're scheduled as far in advance as possible, and that they get all the, all the stuff we can give them beforehand, whether it's agendas or PowerPoint slides, because then they study that beforehand, and they show up ready to go and give as accurate an interpretation as possible, and not trying to figure out, I was looking at some of them, like, how would I interpret STEM? Okay, you know, all the different words and acronyms that they, they encounter. If they can do that upfront, that's better. So those were the top two things they said were most important. I wanted to share with you some words from Lena Moran. She's a secretary at La Colina Junior High, and she gave us permission to share this quote about what she said about her experience. So Lena said, "I cannot begin to describe what a pleasure it was to attend this workshop. From the first activity until the closing circle, I can honestly say I've never had a more eye-opening, thought-provoking, and life-changing experience. I know we only had a short period of time, but the material was presented in very creative and engaging ways. My coworker, Valencia Escobeda, and I haven't stopped talking about the valuable tools we learned. And as soon as we set foot on campus, we made ourselves and our roles as interpreters known and defined. We immediately translated signs and handouts for parents that were being posted and handed out only in English. And we have been helping our Hispanic families with interpreting services, as well as showing our English-speaking families that our site is bilingual and inclusive, and will continue to grow as such." We also haven't stopped singing the songs that we learned. There were a lot of songs in the workshop. It's got, it has its root in the South and the organizing and community education tradition there. So we warned Fran, Wagonick, and all the other folks at La Cuesta beforehand that they'd be hearing a lot of singing. So that's a little bit about the training. We really look forward to committed folks like Lena going on to make a difference at their sites and to continue to work with you on these issues of cultural proficiency, finding creative ways to work together. And we're also open to any questions you might have for us.
Well, thank you, because I remember a year ago, when we first sat down and started talking about this, and to see it come to fruition now is really terrific. And I know there's a lot more we can do, but I mean, to get these 24 folks up to speed is great. And so I'd like, I'm sure board members would like to ask questions or comments. Mrs. Parker?
Well, just a comment. It's interesting always to look back at the history of the Santa Barbara, which is now the Santa Barbara Unified School District, the Santa Barbara School Districts originally. And to see that the origin, even just the educational program in Santa Barbara, was bilingual, bicultural. They struggled with it even from the 1850s. It is a rich resource. It's the history of our community. It's a continuing story of our community. What you do is so key for us to be able to make it an integrated community and not just separate communities living side by side. So thank you so much for the work that you do. We need you. And you've also actually given us some great ideas for the possibility of interpreting career tech pathways in the future, so we're looking at that. But thank you so much, and you know, look forward to a long and fruitful partnership in the future.
Mrs. Cordero?
Thank you very much. I'm one of the district members who attended, I think, the first IEE session and found it life-altering then. And I would just like to encourage any of our district staff, continuing board members who haven't already, to attend that, that institute during the summer. And also, just want to thank you again, like Ms. Parker said, for the work that you do in the community. It, it really touches the lives of so many of our students and our students' families, and just makes the community a better place to live in. But I also have a question for you. I am concerned that we continue to have meetings and not so, well, let me just say, we continue to have meetings, whether it's board meetings, but more importantly, community meetings. to have meetings, whether it's board meetings, but more importantly, community meetings, where the Latino or Spanish-speaking community is basically relegated to wearing headsets. Do you, or can you, provide our district with any training in how to do, in how to run bilingual meetings, rather than simply translated meetings? I know that when we, I worked with the organization up in Santa Maria on an all-day training, and in that meeting, everybody wore headsets, so that people could go back and forth in the language that they felt most comfortable. And sometimes, the meeting was being conducted in Spanish, and the English speakers had their headsets turned on. And sometimes, the meeting was being conducted in English, and the Spanish speakers had their headsets turned on. But I just feel like, when one group wears headsets and has to, like, have somebody sitting over in a corner whispering into a microphone, it suggests that they are not the real target audience. So can you give us some help on that?
I'd love to. And, you know, I guess I want to say that we've come so far, you know, when I started working in bilingual
Programming.
I was facilitating meetings while interpreting them, you know, everything going on at once, and it was a mess. And it's been such a journey to really learn what's out there in terms of best practices for multilingual space, and that they can actually flow a lot less intrusively than most of the models we're familiar with. What we would recommend as a best practice, which you just described, is called bidirectional simultaneous interpreting. And that's where everyone who isn't proficient in all the languages being used in the room wears headsets, and you have as many interpreters as you need. Generally, if it's just Spanish and English, you'd have two interpreters switching off, who are interpreting, so that people can interpret, or people can participate in real time. Because what happens if we only have those who speak Spanish and don't speak English wearing headsets, is if they want to contribute something, then the simultaneous interpreting has to stop, and somebody has to come in, and they speak, and then they interpret it after, and it's, so there's this jarring effect, and it's also kind of hard to get your word in there. So when only one group is wearing headsets, that's, I think that's a fine model for just, you know, just like informational presentation, someone standing up there and speaking, and you just need to get the information to them. But if there's any kind of dialogue or participation, we'd really recommend the bidirectional simultaneous, because then everybody can participate much more at the spur of the moment and in their true voice. And we've just seen such a transformation in our own programs now, in the last couple of years that we've been using this kind of interpretation. I know many of you have interpreted, or have participated in events with us where there's actually dialogue. And it can be a little awkward at first, but I know my experience is usually, you know, after you get into it, everybody kind of forgets you're wearing headsets, and we all get used to it and focus on the task at hand, which is really connecting and dialoguing with each other.
I appreciate what you're saying, because so often, the Spanish speakers have been put in the corner with the headsets, or somebody whispering to them, and it's just that, that status differential that isn't fair at all. But also, what I've noticed has been a really wonderful benefit, has been the eye-opening it has given to the people that are monolingual English, wearing the headset to say, wow, I always thought by providing interpretation, we were doing a good job. But I'm realizing what a struggle it is to really get it and then be communicating, and it builds a lot of empathy across the groups. And I had the wonderful experience of watching two mothers communicating with each other, talking. One mother was from Bulgaria, English-speaking, another mother from Mexico, sitting and at the moment, having a conversation with interpretation going on about their children. And that, they never would have had that conversation. And so, there's just wonderful things to see.
I do think a key part of that, though, is the training. For so long, whether, and it's not just in schools, it's in our community organizations and everywhere else, we tend to say, oh, if you're bilingual, you can be an interpreter. And so, we do need to keep in mind that there's so many other skills that need to be built on to really be able to interpret, especially simultaneous. It's so hard. It's so hard, because you have to be, have an extreme split focus to be understanding, analyzing, and then crafting a clear coherent message at the same time. And so, that's really important, too, to make sure that we're putting, we're setting up the people in that position to really be successful, because they want to do great work. And I think that they can. I think investing in those folks who are already doing the work in our schools makes a lot of sense.
And you mentioned a couple of guidelines, like having more than one interpreter, so they can switch off, having the interpreter only function as an interpreter. Do you have, like, a list of guidelines that, do we have that list, Dr. Cash?
They've presented to our principals, and given them that list of guidelines, as well as a lot of very practical, action-oriented tips that I know, hopefully all, but I've seen it in action at several of our schools.
Great.
And I can send, some of it is folded into the interpreter role description. That's part of the packet, but I'll send the actual PowerPoint that we provided at the principal's meeting, so you can see, we have a top 10 list of best practices for multilingual events.
That would be great. Thank you very much.
Ms. Limon?
Well, I want to thank you for your presentation, and also for the work that you do. And I want to thank all the district individuals, educators, staff who have participated. I had no idea that 150 had participated in the summer institute program, and I'm really thankful that 24 participated in the, in Interpreting for Social Justice program. However, I am reminded that we have a long way to go. I mean, I think that I've been on the board 23 months, and for 23 months, we've been asking for bilingual translation of these meetings, and it's been hard to do. So I would like to see the district continue to have this at the forefront, continue to encourage our administrators, our leaders, our staff members to be part of these programs, because access to information is one component, and how we get the information is another one. So I think it's really important work. It's work that's much needed, and I thank you, and I thank all the school district affiliates, educators, staff members, administrators who have participated, because I think we're moving in the right direction, but I know it's hard, and we have ways to go. So thank you.
Well, in conclusion, I think I would just like to reiterate that part of your discussion this evening points out the need for good, quality, well-trained interpreters. And what better place to go than our students to start them on a pathway to that as a career, where being bilingual is a career in itself, as long as you pursue the training you need to be an interpreter, the way you're describing it, because I know it's more than just being bilingual. So I'm really hopeful that that becomes a career pathway for our schools, and we take our own local talent and have them be available to us as interpreters.
Be happy to hear one of our high schools is investigating that.
Ms. Cordero?
I just wanted to comment, not on the Just Communities presentation, so thank you very much, but on our district use of translators. You will note that, as almost always the case, by the end of the meeting, our interpreter is gone. So if we had Spanish-speaking members of the public who wanted to participate in a discussion of translators, no less, they would, there would not be a translator here for them to do so. That is something that has happened almost for the entire eight years that I've been on the board. And we've raised it, the issue, I've raised the issue several times, other people have raised the issue repeatedly. So this is not directed at you guys. This is for our staff. This should not ever happen. We should, we should never have a situation where Spanish-speaking members of our community could not participate at the meeting if they so chose. She leaves her, I mean, I assume it's part of her agreement, because she does it every meeting. And that, but it hasn't just been her. I mean, I don't, I'm not, so I'm certainly not casting the blame on her. It's, I think it's our policy. We have had this happen over the course of many, 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 many years. So it's a decision we've made in terms, I think, of what our priorities are and are not. So that's something, I personally think that having an interpreter should be like having the lights. You know, if we don't have the lights, we won't hold the meeting. If we don't have an interpreter, we shouldn't hold the meeting.
Mr. Heron?
If I recall correctly, it was purely a matter of money. A good interpreter, we can't afford, and our staff isn't willing to put in that much time. I don't know if that's changed or not, but that was one of the conclusions in the past, is, and I thought we were going to be changing the pay scale. I'm not sure if we did or not.
You know, I'm going to just jump in here, because I was just reminded, we are kind of straying from our agenda item. And I think this is such an important agenda item, that we need to have it, especially when there's a translator here. So I would like to suggest that we bring it back. And I have a feeling, and I'm not sure that this is the case, that because we've been ending our meetings earlier, the last, you know, five or six months, that we may have just ended before the allotted time for the translator to go was over, although in the past, I completely agree that we lost our translators way too soon. So that's something I know we can talk about and work on. Sorry for straying off that, but I'm sure you, this is a discussion that's of interest to you as well. So if we are finished on this one, then I would just like to, again, welcome you. Thank you for coming, and we hope to do a lot more in our district of you.
Thank you. We're looking forward to it.
Okay, I see some folks out there that have been waiting quite a while, and, but I'm glad that we can now get down to our discussion of Safe Roots to School Grant. And this is a proposal regarding the Tatum property. And Mr. Hattjank, are you going to be our lead on this?
No, I am.
Oh, Dr. Cash?
Dave's here as the expert witness.
That's fine.
As board members are aware, the Santa Barbara County Association of Governments announced a $2.2 million new grant for Safe Routes to Schools. That money comes out of Measure A funding, and we have, we've identified two potential projects, and really only one we're going to discuss this evening, and that's in partner, partnering with the county office of ed, not the county office, the County Board of Supervisors, Santa Barbara County. Where, it's across what we call the Tatum property. I don't think we have an official name for that, do we? Do we just call it the Tatum property?
I think it's always been called that, as far as I know. And I don't know the origin of the name either.
And it, apparently, it appears that that's, we've identified a route for children who, eventually, the majority of whom will be students in our school district, from the corner of our property, across the western edge of our property, to San Simeon, which is a street in unincorporated, no, in the city, unincorporated Santa Barbara County, where those, many of the students will, are walking to attend El Camino School, and then going back in the other direction, students from that neighborhood are walking to attend San Marcos High School. We've had an opportunity to look at the proposal, both, or the idea, both from a legal standpoint as to if we did put an improvement on our property, how that would change our responsibility. We've also had an opportunity to look at that particular routes, and talk to people who are developers in our community as to where the best-placed route could be, so as to still maintain the opportunity, if the board should wish, to develop the property, in accordance with any zoning requirements that the county may have. And I think the answers that we've gotten back indicate that this is a good place to put a, an improved walkway. And you have an aerial map that shows you pretty much where the walkway would be. And so, I guess you could say time is of the essence, because a pre-application needs to be filed by the end of the next month, with a full application filed in the several couple of months. And there is some, still some further investigation that we need to do in relationship to that. I don't know, Dave, do we have a cost, a final cost estimate yet? Not yet, which will be important for us to make sure that it fits within the grant maximum cap. And I believe we, I believe we've had our civil engineer out there looking at the space as well. And I know that board members have had an opportunity to visibly inspect the potential walkway. So it's, it's, it's our recommendation. And what, the good news is, is that if, if in fact, it looks like this other potential Safe Routes to School project can move forward, they won't be in competition with each other. So potentially, both grants could be funded through the County Association of Governments. So Dave and I are here to answer any questions that you may have. You got a great white paper from Matt Doberton, did I say that correctly, which clearly outlines it, and provided some great aerial shots of our property and the potential walkway. So we're glad to answer any questions that you may have.
And we do have one public comment. Maybe we'll take that now.
Janet?
Supervisor Wolf?
Thank you very much. So nice to be at a school board meeting. Okay, I will. President Ding.
And, and board members, I am so impressed and honored to be here and have the opportunity to watch all of you in action, and to congratulate you on maintaining and enhancing a terrific district. I think the messages we heard today were science, safety, and swimming. And the one thing that I would like to address is, is the safety issue on that portion that Dr. Cash talked about at the Tatum property. Before I get into my remarks, I just, Matt Doberton was here earlier today, or earlier this evening, and Chris Sneddon, our deputy director of transportation and an engineer, and he volunteered in one of the programs that was highlighted this evening. So he went out to one of the schools as an engineer. So I just want to thank Chris for that.
Thank you.
But anyway, Chris is here, and he will probably, I believe he's able to answer the question on the cost issue. As, as Dr. Cash noted, there is over $2 million available, and we believe that the funding that the school district and the county could possibly receive for this will be a tremendous enhancement for safety at the Tatum property. As, as many of you know, and I thank you for going out and visiting the site, there have been a lot of issues, not just with the children who, who travel back and forth, and the parents, but certainly as, as a supervisor of that district, which is unincorporated, I've had many complaints from neighbors because of the transients who have taken up residence there. And thanks to our sheriff's department and your staff, so much of that has already been remediated. This path, if, if we get the funding for this path, will not only improve the safety for those who walk back and forth, but it will have lighting, so that it will assist the sheriff's department, all safety personnel, so that there is that full-time lighting. And the sheriff's department has indicated to us that that will certainly help them in doing what they need to do. So since this is on district property, we need, we need the district to write off, sign off on, on this proposal. And so, that is essentially what we are asking for today, is, is to sign off on that proposal, on the application, so that we can present it to the SBK, the sub-regional team, of which I'm also a member, but I'm not a voting member on that team. That's a, a group of, it's a separate group that looks at all of the applications. So again, we just want to get that application in. We feel that we have a very good project, and that we will get the funding for it. And if, if I could, Madam President, ask Mr. Sneddon to come up and answer the question that was posed about the cost.
Absolutely. Why don't you come forward?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I go to a lot of meetings, so I'm also really happy to be here at a meeting about making things better for children. It's, it's great to be in this environment. The budget that we put together for this project is, we're in the early application phase, so it's very conservative. We realize there's a lot of stakeholders involved in this project, and we need to leave some flexibility for it to morph along the way. So we So we budgeted very conservatively. There should be plenty of money to do a path there, and, and we, we should have the conservativeness to tailor it to how the various stakeholders weigh in on it.
I don't know if you could answer this question as well, but I was curious about an environmental review. Do we need to do something like that before moving ahead on this?
There would be, environmental would be included as part of the design process.
That's part of the cost as well, then?
Correct. It would cover the design and the construction admin and, and everything to put the project out.
Okay, great. Yeah, I know. I think most of us all went and walked the property last week, and it was really an eye-opener. It was like a slice of life. I think we saw one sheriff removing someone. We saw, I, Mr. Herron and I saw some folks packing up their belongings and leaving. We also saw two mothers with a stroller and a young child going over to pick up their other child at kindergarten. So we know that pathway is being used a lot. And I think I'm very much predisposed to approving this. My only question, and this is something I'd like to hear from other board members and perhaps Dr. Cash, is if we know whether that it would in any way impact our ability to develop the property down the line. Because I, personally, I'd like to see us look at some workforce housing or something along those lines at that property. And if this can be folded into a way to make the, the piece of property even more desirable, maybe that's, you know, an additional benefit to it. Board members, any questions for our expert here?
Yes. In the background paper, one of the comments was ongoing costs. How do we maintain it going forward? And it said, unless there's an agreement to the contrary, we're responsible. I'd like to know what that means of being responsible economically-wise, and what kind of agreement could we get from somebody else who would help? I mean, if it benefits the Galleta Union School District, I would think they would be a party to this. I also, didn't we have it gated and locked up until just recently? And the document says for centuries, or decades, several decades, 100 children a day have been using it. I went out there once to look at it, and it was all padlocked up. I couldn't get on the property.
At least I'm not the only one. During my time in facilities, there's always been an opening, to my knowledge, at both ends for students to walk through. There may have been a different location. The gate that, that you walked through used to be on the opposite side of the chained vehicle fence. And it was very hard for some vehicles to get in there. A few knocked over the end posts. We moved it to the other side, and, and the, other than the times the chain has been cut for illegal dumping, the gate has, has stayed pretty much intact. But as far as openness and, and walking, I, to my knowledge, in the 12 years I've been here, it's never been sealed off at either end.
And what about ongoing maintenance?
Well, there will be ongoing maintenance to maintain and improve path. The, the, a cost of that maintenance will really depend on the path, what kind of materials we use to create it with, how it's constructed. There are, there'll be issues related to maintaining the, the lights that would be placed up. Though in a conversation, I think it was with Matt in your office, he indicated that was a low, low maintenance lighting system that would be used. And they've, they've, the county has used them in other places and had very little issues in relationship to maintenance. I have begun communicating with Bill Banning, the Superintendent for Galleta Union School District, regarding a potential memorandum of understanding regarding maintenance. And, you know, would clearly, I would be moving in that direction to look for their help in maintaining the pathway, as long as the pathway existed.
Thank you. My basic concern is economics. We don't have gardeners to take care of our current school sites. And this is not a, a school site. We have trouble pulling weeds on our campuses. So to spend money on something outside of our school sites needs to be looked at, especially depending on what happens in the election.
Mrs. Parker.
I want to really thank Supervisor Wolf and the county staff for moving forward with this. I think it's a great idea. I think it's long needed. It doesn't just serve the students at El Camino, but it stirs a lot of students at San Marcos High School, so it has a direct benefit to our students currently. And I'm, I'm really hopeful, from what I'm hearing, that the maintenance costs would be, would be low and probably would offset other costs that we have in terms of, you know, going in every now and then and doing cleanup and remediation and, and dealing with vagrancy and making it difficult for the Sheriff's Department to get in. And, and I'm hopeful that this would be a, a help with that, especially with the lighting coming in and hopefully having the, the Sheriff's Department more interested and, and able to, to monitor that area. So I think it's great. My, my question is, can we wait and take action on it at our November meeting? And this is on for conference now, and I know that we want maybe a little bit more information. And maybe Mr. Hettjank or, or Dr. Cash, obviously the, the supervisor would know. But is it okay for us to take action at our, at our first meeting in November?
The timeline, I think I refer to Supervisor Wolf. You all have a nice day. As far as if you take action. We drive through the NFC or C through the next few miles.
Yeah.
December 14th, so.
As always, you know, the sooner the better. If you folks need time to get some more answers, that's, that's fine. But, you know, our staff will need to do the application and, and get things moving and get it in.
Okay. Mrs. Carter.
Well, I'm just wondering, on our, on our attachment, it says the pre-applications are due to SBK by November 30th, with the full applications due on February 1st. Is that, are those a different set of?
That's in my memo. That's what I got off the, the SBK letter to me.
For the pre-apps?
And does the district need to sign on for the pre-app or just the final app? Do you know?
We need to sign on for the pre-app.
Okay, so there it says the pre-app is December 21st.
And the white paper that, yeah, it says December 21st, and then December 14th, that's why I use that date.
Okay.
The November date was something that you got from the.
From the letter that SBK sent me.
Thank you. Well, I'm, I'm sorry, I just wanted to. I would agree that this seems like a project that I would be interested in supporting. But I do have some concerns about the financial implications it'll have for the district in terms of maintenance. That's less of a concern for me, though, than the issue that you raised, Ms. Deacon, about what implications it might have for any further development that we would have. I'm just wondering if we were to provide upgrades specifically as a public thoroughfare, then do we lose the private, the, the right to close that thoroughfare should we decide to develop the property? Because the, while we might want to maintain it, it might, it might impact the, the residents of any housing project that we might want to create there, or other, you know, in some way limit other options that we might have as we were to go forward with, with development. So I'm, it, well, I guess my, the, the bottom line is, I would like to do this, but somehow retain the option of rescinding public use of that property if we should decide later on that that's necessary.
Supervisor Wolf.
I don't know if you know the answer to that.
We, we did have a brief discussion about this previously, and maybe you'd like to share some of your thoughts about that. I know that, that the, the, where the path is now is pretty much, it's actually, I think it's the south border because of.
It borders, it, the, the other side is San Marcos Grower, so it, it is right, it is right at that border. And let, let me also just point out that because of the neighborhood concerns and the Galleta School District concerns, there was initially a request to close it off, as Ms., as Mr. Herron had suggested, and close that area to any, because right now it says it's open space up until, up until sunset. So in a way, I think that there's many folks who would prefer that that whole area is closed off. And we had discussed that with, with the school district, but there's implications to, to doing that. There's financial implications to the school district by, by closing it off. So if, if we, if we as a community are going to work within the constraints of knowing that it will be open, this seems to be, for all of the people who were at meetings, including the sheriff and Public Works and, and your staff, this seemed to be one way that we could address the issues that are on that property. Now, to address the concerns of, of the future and, and future development, I, I, I can't say with certainty what would happen. You know, it's a, it's a, it's a large parcel. If, if you're ready to move forward on that, that, that's going to be a whole process. As far as the Galleta Community Plan, we're still in environmental review. I'm sure you can all appreciate, you know, how, how long it, it might take. I'm not going to guess, though. But I think what we're looking at right now is a very important issue that's, that's pressing with an opportunity to get funding for a project that is so, so needed in that community.
Mr. Herron.
Yep, a couple of things. The reason it's now open is that we do save money. And I think between Tatum and the Hidden Valley, we save about $100,000 by having determined it's open to the public, and then we, you know, we have some responsibility for it. Speaking for the future, I, I can sit here with my experience, anybody who develops that property is not going to be, be able to take away access. I mean, or even develop without giving access. There's going to be a path there one way or the other, and the sooner it gets there, probably the better, from our purposes. And I would like, I, you know, have we, I'd like to give Dr. Cash the authority to, to move forward, but negotiate on our behalf for some of these issues with the Galleta School District, the final cost, whether it's 300 or the maximum is 330, I believe, as far as the application goes. But I'm, I think we're going to do it. I don't see any opposition. I don't see any reason for waiting three weeks. Let's move forward on it, give them time to do a good proposal, a good project, and get on with it.
I, I can say, excuse me, President Deacon, that in talking to people who engage in the development business, this proposed walkway is in the place that they would propose putting one. So that became very clear to myself and someone else on, on staff, just within the last week, that, that when they looked at the map and said, oh, yeah, that's, that's the right place to do something like that. So.
I would move that we move forward with the Safe Routes to School Grant Project proposal regarding the Tatum property and authorize Dr. Cash to negotiate the details on our behalf.
I'll second that. I, I know, why don't we go to a discussion at this point? I know Ms. Lamont also wanted to weigh in.
So I guess I'm a little less ready to move forward, and not because I don't think it's a good idea. I think it's a good idea. I just think that there's still questions we don't have answers for. And so I think it would be useful for the board to have those answers. One, I see that the application can go up to 330,000. We estimate around 300,000. More often than not, our construction costs exceed the initial budget. So what happens if it does go over? Who's paying for that? Is that our school district? Is that part of the negotiation? And then there is the upkeep piece. And I do want to know legally what we have to do. I think that for me, I need that information to move forward. I think this is a good idea. There's no doubt about that. But I think that I am less reluctant to move forward right now without having those answers in front of us, because I think there's implications one way or another, both fiscally, environmentally, and also with future plans for that property.
The, the question you raised about what, what happens if it goes over was something that did occur to me as well. I noticed in the white paper, it says the district's engineer must sign off on the project description and cost estimate. I don't know if we need to talk about, you know, asking for more money in, in the hopes that we wouldn't spend it all, but at least we'd have that cushion. Maybe we need to, to think a little bit more about where we're going to go with the cost on this. We do have a special meeting coming up in a few days. I don't know if, if two more days is enough time to really get that cost part nailed down, but I personally have, am in favor of this. And I think we need to move really quickly, because we need to give enough time to, to get it nailed down so that we can actually get the grant if, if it's going to be available to us. Mrs. Parker.
And I'm okay with taking the vote at, at our meeting on the 13th, but, but we will not have time at our meeting on Thursday. I mean, I just don't see that as being realistic, because there'll be another conversation going around.
It's my, President Deacon, it's my understanding that there's two potential issues. One is the cost in excess of the allocated grant. My understanding is the district would pay for that. And the second is the maintenance, and, and my understanding, and Dave, correct me, please, is that we won't know what the cost will be until we've determined what the materi-, what the path will be. So if the path is made out of one kind of material, the potential maintenance cost could be this. If it's made out of another kind of material, the potent, potential could be this. So, and I don't know if there's been a determination, I've got the engineer here, on what the best material is to create the pathway. If we do, then that probably can help us in getting least estimates.
Why don't you go ahead and address that?
Okay, so again, we did budget very conservatively and within mind that we were going to want a very low maintenance path. So what, what is currently, you know, the concept is to have a really almost overly stout-built pathway that is going to stand up for a long time, basically almost like something that can handle roadway traffic or something like that, that's going to be very robust and not need a lot of maintenance. We're going to address the drainage so that there shouldn't be maintenance associated with that as well. So that's kind of what we came at it with for the concept, realizing that we had various stakeholders, and if, if you as a district wanted to provide input on a different surface or something like that. But we kind of assumed that you were going to want something that really didn't take much maintenance.
Yeah, that's a good assumption.
And, you know, we're in the same boat. Whenever we build something, we want to put, put a little money up front so that we save having to deal with stuff later.
So is it asphalt?
It's, yeah, it's currently asphalt.
Okay. And I, I actually think that asphalt alone probably would not exceed this amount. There's probably some significant grading involved, having walked that, and that may account for some cost. Maintenance, I, to be honest, I'm not that worried about long-term maintenance. Ideally, maybe this project gets moved along in terms of, of seeing something else built there in the time that, that this pathway would deteriorate. But I am feeling that, that there is, there's been a motion and a second, so maybe we'll go ahead and, and take a vote. Mr. Herron.
I think my motion included enough leeway for Dr. Cash if he thinks there's a problem, that he wouldn't go forward. He would come back at the meeting on the 13th.
Yeah, if, I, to be very frank, if, if, and I don't have any reason to doubt, the county spent a lot of energy on this, so I'm sure their numbers are accurate. But if there was any, if we had concerns about that, that a cost would be in excess of the maximum grant, then, yeah, I, I would feel like I would need to bring it back too, because that would be money we couldn't afford to spend. So, but I don't think it's going to be. I don't think it's going to be in excess of the grant. I think they've got a good plan on what the, what the path would be, materials would be made out of. You know, I just want to feel in my own mind, I'm assured as to what the actual potential maintenance costs are. So when I'm asked that by one of you, I can say, hey, we've researched it, and here's what we think it's going to really be. I also want to continue my conversation with the Galleta Union School District, because I, I think that they benefit greatly from the, the pathway. because I, I think that they benefit greatly from the, the pathway, and their, their families will. They are our families, which is the neat thing about this. And I think they're interested, I hope they're interested in willing and being participants in any long-term maintenance issues, so.
Ms. Limon.
I think what we're hearing is that, I think there's a unanimous support for this being a good idea, but in effort to make this a unanimous vote, can we wait for November thirteenth? I just feel like we should have this information. I think, I don't know if, if, I mean, if the county's hearing there's support for this generally from the board, I just feel like the conversation with Galita hasn't happened, and it's just important for us to have it. I don't feel I'm ready to make that decision without having these last pieces, pieces of information. Where, if this project does go over in budget, where it's coming from the district, you said, what, where is it coming from? The general fund, or is it coming?
General fund.
I see lots of people with their hands up. Ms. Cordero.
Okay, I'm just, one of our concerns about waiting until the thirteenth is that if, in fact, we're trying to meet the deadline of November thirtieth, rather than the December twelfth or whatever deadline, that it would give us, it wouldn't give us enough time. But I'm wondering that what, what is it that we would need time for? I'm, I'm assuming that we would need time to draft the proposal. To the county. I'm sorry.
The county is doing it.
But we would, we'd need, we have to send in the information that the county wanted was our.
Yeah, we have to sign off on it.
Yeah, our, our project, the request that a project description and cost estimate acceptable to the Santa Barbara School District be finalized. So whatever date that has to happen by, couldn't we work on that between now and November thirteenth, and not wait until the thirteenth to start drafting that? And then when it comes to us, we, we can then basically approve a more, a clearer description of, of what it is that we're doing?
Yes, I mean, we can, to the best of our ability, we can get our civil engineer's estimate. We can have the conversation, our engineer with, with the county's engineer about the, the materials. But I can't guarantee that I can have Galita Union School District be on board with an MOU regarding maintenance. That issue, obviously, I don't have any control over.
But, yeah, I agree.
I've started that conversation with Mr. Banning, so I, I would continue that conversation.
But you could bring us an update at that time as to where that discussion stands.
As long as I had his permission to do so.
Oh, okay, yeah. So I guess my question is, if staff continues to work or begins to work with, with county staff to draft and participate in whatever the process is, would there be any substantive difference between approving it now and approving it on the thirteenth?
Well, you would have our staff's information, which I don't think is going to be any different than what the county's telling you. That's the, that's, we, we don't have a report from our civil engineer. Okay, all right.
And I, I think the, I think you can rest assured on one point, and that is that there is a maximum amount for the grant and the project. So when they go out for an RFP, it's going to be limited to a certain amount. So you're, so you, you will know, we will all know what that amount is. So, and, and the specs will be, will be developed with that number in mind, so as to not make some pathway that's lined with gold. I'm, you know, we know, we know what, we know what the budget is, and, and I know that our folks do a tremendous job. They just, actually just completed a Safe Routes to School project on old San Marcos Road. And interestingly, it was going to be asphalt, it was going to be asphalt, but the contractor came back and said for the same price, they could actually do concrete. So it's, it's, you know, as we all get excited about swimmers and things, I get excited about sidewalks, another S-word. But, so, these, these guys are pros, your staff, they're, they're pros. I think, you know, we know what the maximum amount is, my guess is they're going to come in below that if they can't. You know, we may not have, we may not have a project. You know, this is just the first step to get, to, to move in that direction. I can't answer the question about, about maintenance. So that, but that, that's, that's not part of the application, although it's something that obviously you're concerned about. And, but if, if there is that notion that you're interested in moving forward with this, it would be good for us to know that so that our staffs can work together, and at the same time, those other conversations can take place. I would, I'm going to go out on a limb and say that if there, if you, if Dr. Cash cannot work out an agreement per Mr. Haron's motion, that it wouldn't be appropriate for us as the, as the Board of Supervisors or as SB CAG to put forth that application. You know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't do it. So, so the area at Tatum would remain the same.
So, having heard that if the RFP came in higher, I mean, if the bids came in higher than the allotted amount, it sounds like it wouldn't necessarily go forward. So we're not really going out on a limb by committing anything at this time. And again, I'm not so sure that, that maintenance is going to be a huge cost. Personally, I'd prefer asphalt over concrete, because if we decide to develop that property, it's going to be a lot more expensive to remove the concrete than it would be to remove the, the asphalt. Mrs. Cordero.
Well, I just, my concern, oh, I'm sorry, but.
I've been waiting patiently.
I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Parker.
I just wanted to say, you touched on it, and Mrs. Wolf touched on it, and that is essentially that, that this is just the application.
Right.
And if it comes in overbid, we don't have to do it. And, and I just feel like it's no big deal, really, with what, with the information that we have, to just go ahead and take a vote and finish.
Did you want to add anything, Mrs. Cordero?
Yes, and it, because I think the discussion has, has really convinced me that the issue of the, the budget is not, is not a concern that would keep me from voting on this tonight. The, the remaining concern that I have is that this is our first discussion that we've had on this, and I'm assuming that paving, in whatever way we do it, that pathway is likely to create more use, which, you know, is probably a good thing. Have, but, but have we talked to the school, Al Camino School that abuts, that abuts the, the property, to determine whether they have any concerns about the increased use?
They're very supportive of the project. I've met and spoke with Liz Barnett, the principal at Al Camino School, and, and Bill Banning. They, they, they recognize there will be, with an improvement, there'll be increased, increased use both directions, and they're very supportive of the project.
I would, I would imagine, Mrs. Cordero, if you had spoken to these mothers who were using that pathway, who talked about the fact that they didn't normally feel safe using it, and I've actually driven by and seen families walking all the way down to Hollister, up, down Hollister towards Turnpike and coming all the way back up to the apartment area where they live, because they were afraid to take that shortcut, which would save them a lot of time, and it was, it was a hot day, and these mothers were saying, we want to go quickly, and so today we decided to take this pathway. So I actually think that, that the people who would like to use it and don't, because they're afraid of it, would be really happy to have it there, and so that part of increased use would be good. I hope there wouldn't be unwanted or excess used by people that would prefer not to be using that property.
Yeah, I, I just want to say, I think this is a great project. I have, I have no doubt that this is wonderful, that everybody would love it, the, you know, the, certainly the people who use it would be very happy. My, the bottom line for me, and the reason why I'm raising the questions, is because I feel like we are sort of acting on it very quickly, and I'm always a little bit skeptical when we are only getting, like, you know, the true believers, we're, we're hearing from, from the choir, and I don't know if there's any, I don't know who, who the opposition is, if there is any, or what their reasons are, or would be. So that's what I'm trying to get at, just is there any part, is there any information that we haven't gotten yet that would influence our decision? Because we're, we're being asked to make a fairly early, or decision about it, or fairly, take fairly quick action. And so my point of view is, yeah, I think it's great, I, it sounds, there's nothing, there's no downside that, to me, but I don't know if there's a downside to somebody else.
I can share with you, I met with one of the major property owners, I haven't met with them all, whose property abuts a portion of the Tatum property, and he was ecstatic with the concept of there being an improved pathway. I met with him today.
Okay.
I haven't met with everybody.
That's helpful information to have, thank you.
People won't always meet according to my calendar.
I don't know why.
Ms. Limon.
I think there's no doubt that this is a good project. I mean, it's about making it safe, the lights, that's, there's no doubt. I mean, I also just want to point out that in today's conference agenda, so far we've made two conference items into action items and voted, and so I want to be careful about that becoming the norm. I think we haven't traditionally done that, we've made exceptions. And I would, I would support it today, you've all convinced me, and I would have supported it anyway. I just wanted the information, and I want to be careful about the culture we set. Is, if something's coming in as a conference, but we're acting on it, and I know we have that prerogative, but we haven't done it so freely in the past. And, I mean, this isn't the only item, there's two other items, so I just want to be careful about that. I think it's a good idea. I think it, I mean, we walked it, it would make so much sense to have a pathway there, to have lights there, no doubt.
Okay, well, I think it's probably, we have a motion and a second, so it's probably time to go ahead and call question. All those in favor say aye. 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 Pose no motion passes, five zero. Thank you, board.
Took us a long time to get there, but at least we got there.
Thank you, and, and I think we all really look forward to hearing more detail about it, and we're very hopeful that Galita Union will weigh in with us, because certainly their students and families will be using it in large numbers, we hope. All right, thank you, board. All right, now we have one more item, and it is getting late. Mrs. Parker.
Yes, I was going to ask, that we pull this item since it's at least a thirty-minute item and not a ten-minute one, and that we discuss it hopefully at our next regular board meeting.
I'm glad we were thinking along the same lines. And I had asked Dr. Cash to put this on, because as a board, we had talked about wanting to, once the scores were out, to talk about, we've all been reading about the paper, and we know what the numbers are, but I think it's important for us to talk about them, and Dr. Cash put together a wonderful PowerPoint presentations on this, yes.
What, what else would you like, since we have some time now? What other kind of information would you like to see on API and AYP, other than what you have before you?
I think this is a good place to start for the discussion next time.
Okay.
I'll tell you what, if anybody thinks of anything, you can let Dr. Cash know.
Yeah, please.
And we will put it on for our November thirteenth meeting. Okay, we do not need to return to any consent items. We've talked about coming events, are there any others that we haven't spoken about? Sounds like there's some great performances coming up. And future agenda items, uh.
Well, I just want to add what I, what I just said right now. We should just be careful about the items that are coming to us in conference or action, and kind of try to make an effort to distinguish which they are.
Good point. Mrs. Parker.
I have a conference agenda item. A little over three years ago, the board voted for a very expensive reading support program, Read 180. We've been getting typically annual updates on what's going on with it. It's been a very successful program for the district, and I think it's about time for us to have another update.
Okay, and I will just, one last thing, I did want to reiterate that we are having a special board workshop this Thursday at five o'clock on the strategic plan. Mrs. Cordero.
Sorry, I, I just had a future agenda item. It was one that I mentioned yesterday at our, at the talk at the State of the District, which is, is to get the, if we can, if there's, if we have a way of doing it, for our test scores, if we can get the English language learners disaggregated from the overall Latino subgroup, so that we can see the, how the test scores of the.
English-only Latino students.
Well, not necessarily English-only, but, but English-fluent Latino students are achieving relative to the other subgroups. Okay, great. And we don't need, that doesn't have to be an agenda item, it could be in our board brief or.
We could probably get the data to you as part of the API, API AYP, that's a presentation for the next one. We could certainly get that data.
That would be great.
Okay.
That would be, that's a perfect place to put it, too. And that is something that we've talked about as a board before, so.
Okay.
That's all, I'm going to return.